Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.
Six o'clock hour has arrived and we'll call our meeting to order at this time. First, we want to pause and wish everyone in our community a great and happy Easter. Our Easter weekend will be coming up and hope each and everyone has a wonderful Easter. Couple of other announcements before we go further. On May the 2nd, at 12 noon at our Hamilton Police Department, the city will observe the National Day of Prayer. And there'll be several speakers and there'll also be refreshments following the observance of the National Day of Prayer at the police station in the auditorium. And that will be 12 noon on May the 2nd. May the 3rd will be the event of our second First Friday events. And that takes place between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. on First Friday afternoon of May. That will be May 3rd. If you desire to set up a booth and be a part of this activity, you need to call our Chamber office at 921-7786. And we welcome all folks to participate in our First Fridays. There's a lot of good fun to be had, good shopping, good food, and good fellowship, and some entertainment on the square. We hope the First Friday events are gonna grow larger and larger. There'll also be some First Friday t-shirts on sale by the Chamber of Commerce. I think those might be fifteen or so dollars apiece. So, we'd like for you to get your First Friday t-shirt. Almost everybody's a t-shirt fan and letter t-shirts are real popular right now. So, we invite you there. Before we get into our first item of business, we're gonna stand and have our indication and our pledge. We are proud of our visitors that are here with us tonight. Thank you for coming. Let's go. Our Father in Heaven, we pause to give you thanks for such a beautiful day. Lord, we thank you for the community that we live in. We thank you for the harmony of our community. We ask your blessings upon each citizen of Hamilton. Lord, we thank you for sparing us during this time of bad weather, this past weekend. We know there were people injured and we pray for them at this time. We know there's maybe lives lost and we agree with those that agree. Lord, we ask you to conduct our business tonight in a way that's favorable and that might always be found in your will in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got several items of business tonight. The first item, of course, would be the approval of our minutes of our last regular council meeting held on April 1st, 2019. We need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
About to make a motion, wait a second.
I'll say it.
Wait a second. All in favor of approving those minutes? Thank you. And we have a work session on March 28th, 19. And we'll be presenting those minutes for approval. A recommendation to approve the minutes of our work session from March 28th. And we'll need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
Jim made the motion. We need a second.
I'll say it.
Hurry, second. All in favor? Thank you.
I'll abstain. I was at work.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy. On the first item that is involving resolutions tonight, we have a recommendation to adopt a resolution number 2019-4-15 declaring April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Hamilton. This is something that we generally do, being a fair housing city and complying with those ordinances. So, we need to adopt this resolution this time on a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Wait, make a motion. We need a second.
Second.
We got a second. All in favor of adopting that resolution? Thank you. The fourth item on our agenda tonight is a recommendation to approve the agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for their 2019 funds given to them by the city of Hamilton to hold events and festivals. The amount requested is seventeen thousand five hundred, and this was in our annual budget. We need a motion to grant those funds to our Chamber.
I'll make the motion.
Jim made a motion. We need a second.
I'll say it.
Hurry, make a second. All in favor?
I'll abstain. I sit on the board.
Okay. That's understandable. Thank you, Tammy. And we appreciate you sitting on that board and serving also in all the activities in the Chamber. The fifth item of business is the recommendation to clear a 1998 Chevy 3500 that's used by the fire department into surplus property. This truck has been down at the college for more than a year. And it has a bad engine and they don't deem it worthy of spending the kind of money it's gonna take to fix it up.
So, will we advertise this or will it go on Gov. Deals or?
It'll go, may I put it on the Gov. Deals for us? It'll have a lot of deals turned in on it.
What kind of truck is it?
The 3500 that was formerly used as a parcel, a part of our rescue team's equipment truck. But it doesn't have a working engine. I talked to the fire chief about it and he said that the truck, the school's recommended not to spend the money it's gonna take to fix it up.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We'll need a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor? We replaced the 2500 truck, same recommendation on it. It's got a bad motor and transmission. I believe it does have a utility bed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Somebody might need. It's gonna take a good bit of money to get it running. That's when it blew up and we replaced it for the street department. We're gonna recommend that it be put in surplus property also.
Is it going on Gov. Deals too?
Yes. They're both. Is that what we're planning to do with that, Mike?
Yes, we're gonna... Put it on Gov. Deals.
Yeah, okay. Yes, that'll be what we'll do with it. We'd need a motion on that.
I'll make the motion.
Tammy made a motion. We need a second.
I'll say it.
Hurry, second. All in favor? Thank you. Item 7 is a recommendation to purchase a patching machine for the street department to repair potholes. This is a mechanized professional machine. It's a new machine. It will come with some warranty. I believe Mike's researched the warranty.
I have. It comes with a two-year warranty on the engine and the main part of the mechanisms, the compressors and all those kind of things. The only thing that wouldn't be covered under a warranty is the tires and hoses and such as that. Stuff that wears, you know, like hoses and tires and maybe some pins or something like that, stuff that...
The warranty's on the mechanical part of the machine?
That's correct. Yes.
The cost of that machine is sixty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Mike has checked his budget to see if he has those kind of funds available in his annual budget. And you do have a little bit of spare change?
Yes, sir.
After we buy it?
Yes, sir.
So, this will top the amount for the year. We won't be able to purchase any other equipment this year for his department.
And I missed the two meetings when y'all discussed this. It works on both the asphalt potholes and the potholes that are in the tar and slag roads?
Yeah, any pothole that's been fixed.
Okay, so, and it isn't going to negate the eleven or twelve roads that are already on the list to be tar and slag? Buying this isn't going to take away?
No.
The roads?
No, we'll use it probably in part with the tar and slag. You know, if there's potholes already there, we'll go back with this and fill all the potholes up.
But you're still planning to do the eleven or twelve?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we've already got two, basically ready to go.
One of the features of the product, so this will take place of us buying all this coal mix that we're buying. We bought over twenty thousand dollars worth of it last year. And we'll be able to manufacture our own mix with this. With just materials that this machine will mix for us. And we feel like these patches will stay where our coal pads and our shovels are not staying.
We trapped one out in Hamilton just after you get the bridge. Now, camp that in there, right by there, look at it, see how it does, and that's on asphalt.
The one I hit? No, not that one. Okay. It's okay. So, it's before the one we talked about?
Oh, yeah.
You did before that?
Below the house here.
When, and I've just asked different people questions. It takes two people to operate this, one to drive the truck and one to walk behind the machine?
That's right.
Okay. And do you plan on two people doing this continuously till we get the potholes patched? Or are they just, I mean, how are we gonna work that if it's gonna take two men to do it?
If I've got two men available, they'll run until the potholes are patched. There's days that we don't have, you know, everybody available to where two people can run.
Well, that's why I was wondering, you know, if in the beginning you were gonna make some kind of adjustment and try to get the roads...
I've got two people that are on the best side of that.
You ready?
If we would like to move forward on that, we'd need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Now, second.
I'll say it.
All in favor of purchasing a machine that fixes our roads? Thank y'all very much. Item 8 is a recommendation to approve the assignment of West Alabama TV Cable franchise agreement to Charter Cable. There's been a transaction between the two companies, as I understand it, a buy deal?
Yes, sir. Spectrum Southeast, which is a subsidiary of Charter, had bought the assets of West Alabama. I think they finalized the deal a couple of weeks ago. We have a franchise agreement with West Alabama TV and Cable. And pursuant to that agreement, we have to give our written consent to assign that franchise agreement over to anyone else. So, Spectrum Southeast have a Charter Communications has asked us to assign or allow that.
After looking over this, did you see any reason we shouldn't adopt this resolution?
Yes, sir. Charter is a very large company. They should provide excellent service and, you know, very similar to the same operation as West Alabama. But they'll have more options for our people, so I think it'll be a better service for them.
Are they requesting to keep their office here?
They have requested that. That's not part of the franchise agreement. But they have requested to lease City Hall or the space in City Hall. I don't know that we're ready, you know, to discuss that or, you know, to vote on that. But that'd be something for y'all to think about and talk about. But they have requested to lease the space in City Hall. In fact, I got that today.
Okay, so, so we don't need to discuss that before we discuss this?
Well, we can talk about it. I don't know, you know, I tell me what to do about that.
I'm like, makes you drop dead about it. Wouldn't wanna kinda make sure they're gonna stay here down instead of moving off to somewhere else. Because that is a few jobs and a lot of jobs you're not moving for. You know, if it works, then I don't relax.
Yes, sir. Yeah, well, they're interested in leasing the office space or whatever space they have here.
Well, that's something that we do need to discuss because there had been some question, you know, before about their rent and exactly their lease and, you know, so that's something that definitely we need to discuss.
Yes, yes, ma'am. But I believe the franchise assignment of that is ready to go. It looks like they have it.
Their main office is in Fayetteville.
West Alabama's main office is in Fayetteville, yes, sir.
They're in...
Yeah, where is Charter? Yeah, where is there?
Their main office is in St. Louis. That's where they're headquartered.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, they'll have local operations.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Jim. Thank you, Lord.
The franchise agreement will be a continuance of West Alabama's service agreement with us. And West Alabama just paid up over seventeen, eighteen, over twelve thousand dollars that they delivered to us last week for their franchising fee. And Spectrum, which is a subsidiary of Charter Communications, will be who our agreement is with. And I'd like us to continue to do business with these folks since they're gonna service our area and offer them this same franchise agreement that we've had with West Alabama Cable.
I'll make the motion.
Tammy made the motion. We need to second that motion. I'll say it. Jim made a second. All in favor of offering the franchise agreement? And we'll bring this matter of the lease to our next workshop, which will hopefully be Wednesday afternoons going forward. I was out of town to, last week, couldn't have a Wednesday work session. But going forward, I don't see any reason that we shouldn't continue our Wednesday afternoon work sessions. Okay, folks, I don't have any other items of business to bring before.
We've got a cleanup day scheduled for April 27th.
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
And I'm still having complaints about the fishing at the duck pond, but I don't know if the signs are...
We're ordering the signs.
Order the signs? Okay, great.
Mayor Mike addressed that matter this morning early to make sure that we get those signs posted.
And I questioned last time about the WEX card system. And I have looked over the bill. And all that's coming off are the taxes. There's no state bid price on the fuel. So, all that comes off is the taxes. So...
We discovered that.
So, we need to discuss, you know, how we're gonna go forward because depending on where you fuel up and what grade you get, you're, it's costing a lot more. If you fill up with super than if you fill up with the other and then the price of the pump. So, there's a, we definitely need to discuss that.
I thought I found that we had a different price like the James Land right up there. Never dreamed that this...
Not according to the deal.
I know. That's what I said. I never would've dreamed of that. Didn't been doing that for years. That's the way of it. We should have our own pumps and buy our own gas and stuff. I mean, that's a lot of money.
Regulation is the only reason we moved away from what we were doing. The A.D.M. problems that we were having is they were accusing us of spillage, not being properly perfected in our facilities, which was gonna cost a lot of money to comply. And we certainly wouldn't authorize people to go out and buy super product when eighty-seven is sufficient to run a bill. And I've never filled up with super. I wouldn't expect any of our employees to go out and buy a super.
I wonder why you run around spudding?
I look for the cheapest, gasoline's going up, fuel is free. But I really think that we need to give us a chance and look at and compare costs because I think it's so much cleaner operation. Plus, we get a report every, every drop of gasoline is bought. It shows who buys it, how much it was, where it was purchased, the savings, the tax exemption. Like here on this fill-up, this Tim rise vehicle filled up, three dollars and seventy-six cents was the tax exempt on that fill-up. So, I certainly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anybody buying high-priced gasoline that could fill up with eighty-seven, you know. I mean, that I will stress to everybody. And I certainly hope that nobody's going out buying super gasoline because that's not guaranteed. I have addressed these matters. I guess I leave a lot to what I would think would be judgment of the individual. Have you seen a downside on what we've done, Mike, as far as the day-to-day operation of the...
I haven't seen a downside, no.
Well, now, you're...
It was my understanding that it was gonna be, basically you're getting it taxed free is the only... I wouldn't expect, I figured that was, right, whatever the state bid price can be. But, you know, I don't know that. As far as down at the shop, we're the only people filling up with anything at the, down at the city shop.
Yeah. So... Do your guys buy super when they put it in their gasoline?
I'm putting it out. I mean, I can't...
I wouldn't want to.
We're still pumping out of, we're still trying to pump what gasoline we've got out of...
Because the bid price takes...
Yeah, yeah. We're still getting that gas out of it until we get it and then we'll move it out completely. And all that we'll have at the shop will be diesel.
You get a bid price? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
We did get a bid price.
And we're not getting a bid price anymore?
Not when we went to this system.
No. But the bid price that we had always gotten before was not at state bid price.
No, it was just, what is that? See, I asked that and nobody could tell me.
I don't know that there is a state bid price.
Well, see, that's what, nobody, anybody that I've asked has had the same, there's no state bid price on the gasoline. So, the bid price we had was when we just put it out to the locals, you know, like...
To bid it, right.
To bid it that way.
In bulk. In bulk. You get a better price than bulk, right? If we had a, if we had a real clear-cut way to keep the old system, we're running to buy equipment.
So, I probably, oh, excuse me, mayor, I didn't make it right. I didn't make it right, I'm sorry.
If we'd had an ability to get reports on what we were doing down there, purchasing gasoline and who was buying it and how much, we'd like to stay with the old system. But we're gonna have to update the computers. Mike couldn't give us a printout on what was happening down there. The reader wouldn't read the pop anymore. And A.D.M. was almost about having that much fuel supply on hand and the potential spillage and this kind of thing. So, there's lots of reasons that we went to the card system. I'd certainly like to give it a trial period to see if it's comparable. Of course, it may not be exactly comparable with a rising price rate. We may not compare apples to apples. And when I noticed today, the 255 is about the cheapest gas in town. And we've had gasoline down to two bucks. That was less than a year ago. So, I don't know hardly what to say about it, but...
It just looks to me like we oughta save money if we bought our own gas and pumped it out of our own tanks and hired a man down there to, a man to run it. Just like the service station man hires somebody to run his service station. Why can't we buy the car a man that that's all his job is to do is keep up whoever buys the gas and he's there to ride it down and pump it in the trucks? And nobody pumps it in their cars and things?
Well, no.
Would that not work?
No, because sometimes they have to fuel up during the night and, you know, there's different, there's different kinds that different people fuel up. And my thing is, you know, when I asked before, because I didn't understand, it was supposed to be a state bid fuel price. But then when we checked, or when I checked the thing, all that's coming off is just the taxes, which is what I thought originally it was gonna be. And it may save money in the long run, even though it costs money because we don't have the A.D.M. potential violations. But right now, you know, I had asked you before if you specified where they had to buy. You said no, and then if, what grade they had to buy. And when I got to looking at this, if some are buying the super and some are just buying the other...
Does it take more candy?
That's what counts.
It does?
Yeah.
My food's working hard enough that they can't fill up in the daytime instead of filling it up at night.
Well, they can't just, the police don't work the way she is. Yeah, they're all...
Well, they fill up in daytime. If something gets empty, nearly empty, they can go fill up. They like it. They don't have to wait. They give it to go somewhere, then they're empty. They're not gonna fill up in somebody's house burning down.
Well, they need access twenty-four hours is what I'm saying, you know.
Well, the man, the man that's over the, if you had somebody that's over that gasoline, if they, with one or two that added a man, there's no use for having the man at night. I don't throw my car in the parking empty at night. And the police are, I don't care who it is, I mean, they should have their vehicle filled up, ready to go when they say.
It's just at night, there's Saturday and Sunday when we don't have workers on hand. And if we wouldn't, if we wouldn't hire a man to stay down there on Saturday and Sunday for two fill-ups, you know.
Well, if that, if there's two fill-ups, we can go fill up the service station and feel like cheaper there then, to do that than to do what we're doing. We're wasting some money, we're wasting some money, I tell you that, and all of us not going in police cars probably and the other thing.
Well, let's just look at it and maybe you wanna consider saying we're gonna buy this grade.
Our system we got, Gene, is real good, it's given us full reporting of everybody that drives, buys a drop of gasoline now. We didn't have that before, we didn't have any way to get a report on that. The reporting part is real good. And we might spend a penny or two more a gallon to have the system, but we, it's organized. Where we were was flimflam, it was not organized, we couldn't tell who was doing what. And now we can, we've got a full reporting of it.
I don't know, I think we're kinda flimflamming on a lot of things, that took, it's not been reported, right?
Well, we're just saying about the gas right now, the gas was not in a, in a good situation and our fuel was illegal.
What, who goes and fills up their feed hoppers?
Everybody.
Every individual and he lets his down and gives it to you?
He's gotta give it mileage on the vehicle he's in and his social security number, the last four digits. It identifies every person that buys gasoline, because the card he's given, he can only use it with his code and that's his social security number. So it identifies how much he bought, when he bought it, where he bought it and who bought it. And how much it cost and how much tax savings we had off of it. And that's what the WEX system does, it gives you your taxes of, of the gas.
All right, but I don't believe in it, I mean, I just think it's always a way, but that's all right, everybody else agrees that thing. But I think it's gotta be a better way, always, this has been this way in the city and I'm a little, as far back as I can remember, even when my daddy worked for the city for twenty-five years. And same with Rob, and I, I...
That's what we're trying to do is improve and what we were doing just wasn't working at all.
Have we changed since we've been here?
We moved the card system about a month and a half ago. And, and we're keeping enough diesel fuel to run the vehicles that have to have none by diesel. And that's the only fuel we've got in storage now is, is some diesel fuel. We don't have any gasoline on hand now, we buy it at various stations in town. And, and we'll stress in every department to burn as cheap a gasoline as we can and not be buying the super. I mean, there's no reason that if it'll run on eighty-seven, to buy ninety-two octane. And most vehicles will run on eighty-seven octane.
What do you think about it, Mike, you've got a bunch of vehicles out that you have to keep up with?
Yes, sir.
Do you think it could be a better way for us to save money, I mean?
Well, I mean, you're saving money by not having to purchase a thirty thousand dollar computer system to keep up with the gas to start with. Plus, you're not having to worry about having fines and regulations with ADM, but, I mean, there's money, it'll have to be, probably another twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. That have to be spent on our equipment down there to meet their regulations, yeah, so...
Do you think that what we're doing now is the best way?
Well, I think...
Cheap as way to see is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, if you wanna monitor everything down with what, who's buying what, what vehicle is going in and how much is they're speeding on it, you can't beat it.
All right, okay, I'm satisfied then, you say it's that way.
It's a lot better system than what we had before, yeah, we might be paying a little bit more than we're working for. But in the long run, I think we're money-hating, because we're not having to invest in something that's, that's gonna have to, you know, a year down the road probably have to be replaced again.
Yeah, according to how much that'd save you, so you had to invest in it.
That's right.
Okay, you're, I believe, I understand. I just know...
You'll never know, I mean, it's, we've only been doing it a month or two.
Oh, 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 okay.
You know, we need to, I think we need to look further down the road to see, to get an average of, you know, to actually see what's going on.
Okay, I understand that, yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate all the comments tonight and, you know, I, a good discussion on this matters, I'll leave because I want what's best for the city too. And with the recommendations we've had, the WEX system is where everybody's headed. It's, all these towns around us are ahead of us, they're already on it, Dakar's on it. You, just about anybody you talk to now has come away from self-storage and selling, uh, book fuel at their location. And I don't, I don't think it's gonna cost the city a lot more money to do it this way. We'll compare our bills in ninety days and, and see what we discover. But I think it's gonna be a good system, Amy really likes it, she can now keep up with the, with the system. And know the reporting, she's writing about, down about apartments, I've got her, where she paid the bill. She's, every month she's saying, right there is what I bought, twenty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, that's the mayor's tab for last month. Right here is another department, oh-three, oh-four, oh-five, eighteen, oh-eight, every department. And she's, she knows what those codes stand for and she's got them, she said, I love it because I can keep up with what's going on.
Okay.
I've already heard report, not just to have any objection for it.
But see, in fact, we've, since we've been elected on here, we've been, I haven't been told anything about how gasoline and trucks, anything that's spent on it. How it's worked out, you know, and I thought we were still on, like you said, this has been changed in the last year or something here, what you're doing now, or the last few months, what'd you say?
About a month and a half.
About a month and a half, yeah, before that, oh, I'm going on what I've heard about passion administration, if we're still doing the same.
When ADM came to see us, they accused Mike of having a, a significant fuel spillage out there. And we were talking about penalties, they made him get his underground oil reservoir on top of the ground with a certified tank. Uh, used oil, we didn't have to get a bit, a vat to hold it, it cost twenty-five hundred dollars. We went ahead and did that to comply with ADM and we were on the edge of having some monetary penalties from those people. Because of things they were reporting on us and saying we weren't correcting, so we're trying to get away from all that kind of stuff. So we don't have to deal with it every time they show up at our door.
Anyway, I'm not getting that into it.
Is there any other items tonight? If not, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, thank you all for being here.